All right, let's go ahead and get started. I think most everyone's here. Russell, if you can call us to order, do the roll call.
Certainly, Mayor. Excuse me, Councilmember Albretton?
Oh, actually, I don't see Jim here yet, so let's hold off this a second, sorry. There he comes. There he is. All right, I think we're good.
Okay. Councilmember Albretton?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Mayor Breckus?
Here.
You have a question?
All right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, and with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. Keith, turn it over to you for the quasi judicial.
Mayor, good evening, everyone. Items number three and four on today's agenda are considered by the Florida courts to be quasi judicial in nature. Just real briefly, most of the time you all are acting in your legislative capacity, setting policy decisions for the entire town. But in other occasions such as this one, you're sitting as judges in which an applicant presents evidence to you to which you have to determine whether or not the applicant has shown by competent substantial evidence that it has met the criteria of the code to be granted the relief that they're seeking. Tonight, that relief that is being sought is a waiver of plat and a plat for two residential properties in the ranches. At this time, I would ask Russell to swear in anyone wishing to speak on either items three or four on the agenda. Russell?
Thank you, Keith. I would ask you all to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Russell, could you please read item three into the agenda?
Certainly. Item three is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP-27-20 to subdivide 4.42 net acres of property into two lots of 2.0 and 2.42 acres, generally located at the northwest corner of the Mustang and Appaloosa Trails intersection, legally described as the south half of Track 37, less the south 40 feet and less the east 20 feet thereof, Section 2, Township 51 South, Range 40 East of the Everglade Sugarland Company subdivision. According to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book two, page 39 of the Public Records of Dade County, said lands lying and being situated in Briar County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Is the applicant present for this item?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, it's Mary Ann Allen speaking.
Hi, are you... Jeff, who is the applicant for this matter? Is it Mary Ann Allen?
Yeah, she's the property owner and petitioner.
Okay, so she is personally the applicant. So, Mary Ann, if you could just state your name for the record that you've been sworn in and you understand the nature of your application.
Yes, I'm Mary Ann Allen, have been sworn in, and I understand the nature of the application.
Thank you. At this... And Jeff, if you could just state your name for the record as well, that you've been sworn in.
Jeff Cadem's Town Planner. I have been sworn in.
And, sorry, my email was buzzing. Mayor, Council, has anyone had any ex parte communications concerning this matter? If so, state such communication and the nature of such communication.
I've had, excuse me, David Kozinski, I've had two conversations regarding this matter. Initially, right at the beginning, Ms. Mary Ann Allen had called me to discuss it, and I just gave her a brief overview, and I concluded the telephone conversation stating that because of the nature of the quasi judicial process that I was unable to give any opinion either way on my decision. The second person I spoke with was Kathy Lamb. She said she was, just in general sense, would like to preserve more of the five acre properties, but understood that there are rules that we are required to follow in the quasi judicial process. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember. Has anyone else had any communications?
I have not.
No.
Keith, I haven't had any verbal communications, but I received emails, I guess we all did, from, let me find, Robin, I hope I pronounced her name right, Ditzian.
And again, if you've opened that email and have read it, then you need to disclose it. If you have not opened it, then you do not need to disclose it.
I opened it and read it, so that's why I'm disclosing it. Thank you.
I opened it and read it.
And what was the nature of that email, Bob?
It is an email about the property we're talking about and how the residents are opposed, I believe. Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Has anyone else had any communications?
Is this the emails from last meeting we were talking about?
Yeah.
Yes, anything dealing with plat number WP-27-20, Mary Allen's plat waiver?
Yeah, I had the same email several weeks ago and opened it up and read it from Ms. Ditzian.
Right, yeah, I thought that was referring to the last meeting, but, okay, I got that email as well.
Thank you. All right, at this time now the disclosures have made, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadem to present the staff report.
Thanks, Keith. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This application was tabled for a notice defect. That's been corrected, everyone's properly noticed, and we're good to go. This is 4.42 acres, the northwest corner of Mustang Trail and Appaloosa Trail. On the property are a 3,200 square foot, single-family residence, a 1,700 square foot barn, and two small outbuildings. The barn, the two outbuildings, and the majority of the property, in fact, all of the property except just the house area, are designated ag. And all of the structures, except for the house, are considered farm structures under Florida statutes. All improvements are located on the southern 2.42 acres that Ms. Allen resides on and intends to continue to live on. She also intends to retain her agricultural designation, which she has because of the equestrian nature of that property. The application that she's filed satisfies all of the zoning requirements except possibly one, as I will note. The subdivision won't cause any of the improvements on the south 2.42 acres to become nonconforming in any manner, with the possible exception of the northernmost 294 square foot outbuilding, which would not meet the full 25-foot rear setback requirement. And this one's notable because it's the new property line that would come within 25 feet of this existing outbuilding. In this regard, the petitioner requests that the council recognize that this outbuilding is a farm structure and not subject to setback requirements under the Right to Farm Act. We note, of course, that since the applicant is creating the situation via subdivision, council has full authority to require that it meet the setback requirement, but can also approve this with the substandard setback because it is a farm building. So, in this regard, in order to encourage the town to accept the property line that runs straight across east-west and comes within about five feet, or excuse me, than 20 feet of the structure, the Ms. Allen has stipulated that, number one, if the structure is destroyed by a windstorm or by any other means, it will not be rebuilt except in conformance with the 25-foot setback requirements. And two, that in the event that the agricultural designation is lost, both this outbuilding and the smaller one to the south that are both fairly close to the side property line will be immediately brought into compliance with all zoning requirements. In the event that council is not comfortable approving the application with a nonconforming farm structure setback that would be created by this new property line, the petitioner has offered a second alternative, which jogs the property line, actually moves that new property line a little bit and jogs it around the structure to maintain the 25-foot setback. So, in conclusion, Ms. Allen is requesting that you approve option A, which would create a nonconforming setback to this small building, but has an alternative that would comply if council's comfortable with that. We note that this particular structure that would have a nonconforming setback is not in tip-top shape. I know Ms. Allen might not like to hear it, it's probably not long for the world. She has stipulated that, you know, it won't be rebuilt in this location if anything happens to it. With that, I'll turn it back to council.
Thank you, Jeff. Does any member of the Town Council have any questions of Jeff Cadem at this time? Seeing no questions, Mary Allen, do you have a presentation? Or would you like to just stipulate for the record that you support Jeff's presentation?
Okay, like I said, like the sheds, I'm not for the world either at my age. I totally agree and want to be as conforming as possible. So, yeah, if the structure comes down, it's just wooden sheds, I won't build them. And if I want to build anything, it will conform to all town requirements. The other thing is, we're only talking about four foot in some places, like it's a small structure, they're only 12 feet long. And the current boundary is 20 feet to 20.1. It's only like four foot difference from the 25-foot requirement. But if you don't like it, you can do a jigsaw line. But I spoke to my buyer, and he said he really wants a straight line, which would look much more appealing than having a silly jigsaw line around the corner. That's what I just wanted to add to the meeting.
Thank you so much. Does any member of the council have any questions of Mary Ann Allen at this time?
David.
Seeing none?
No, no, I think we have a couple. I think we have a couple, Keith.
From the council?
Yes.
Yeah, looks like David and Jim have their hands up.
Oh, please.
Ms. Allen, I just have a question. In the parcel that you're intending to retain with your residence on, do you have any intention of selling or transferring that parcel?
No, no, I want to die here, guys. I love this place.
Okay, Mayor, unfortunately, I can't see the hands raised.
Jim also has his hand up. Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Polikoff and Mary Allen, got real quick question, Jeff, maybe you can help. When you say that that structure will not be rebuilt, does that also mean that there'll be no repairs to it until it does fall down?
Well, there's no repairs necessary at this time because all the wood is intact, the roof is intact, and it doesn't need any work. However, if we get a big windstorm or hurricane and it gets damaged or destroyed, I will tear it down. I agree to that.
Would it be repaired before the storm? In other words, would you go in there now? Could you go in there now? If this is approved, go in there now and then rebuild it before a storm was to come?
There's nothing to be rebuilt. The structure is intact. All of the wood is in good shape. There's nothing deteriorated about it. It's basically for storage. And you can come look at it if you want, but there's nothing that needs to be repaired. I don't intend to do anything to it. And if it is damaged from a storm, I will tear the structures down. But remember, I've had a Farm Act agricultural designation for over 30 years on this property. And everything that was built was in compliance with the Farm Act at the time.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone else have questions?
I don't see any.
Seeing none, Russell, if you could please do public comment. All members of the public need to state that they've been sworn in. And Russell, if you could please call them as they desire to speak.
Keith, at this point, there we go, this is our first one. Okay, our first speaker is George Kalis. Mr. Kalis, can you hear us, sir?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Have you been sworn, sir?
We can. Yes, I have.
Very good. You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Obviously, this, I guess all of you know what this is going to be about. It's about the, for the people that don't know, it's about the dump that's going on next door to me.
About this item, Mr. Kalis?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, I have nothing to say on this item.
I don't see any other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, public session is closed. Does Jeff, do you have any final comments?
No, I don't.
Mary Ann Allen, do you have any final comments?
No, I don't.
Mayor, turn it over to you and the council for deliberation. Again, if the applicant has shown by competent substantial evidence that they have met the criteria of the code, the town shall approve this. If the Town Council does not believe it has, it can deny it. Or the Town Council can approve it with conditions. Leave it to you for deliberation. Under the Town of Southwest Ranches Charter, it requires five affirmative votes to pass.
Great, thank you, Keith.
I'll make a motion to approve Plan A.
I would second that.
You want to make that subject of stipulations, the voluntary stipulations on the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you both. Any further comment on this or questions, discussion on this item in the council? Seeing none, I think we can take the roll.
Okay, Mayor. Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you. The last quasi judicial item before I turn it back over to the mayor is item four. Russell, if you could please read that into the record.
Certainly, Keith. This is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number PL-55-20, the Assad Residence Plat comprising one single-family dwelling lot on 4.59 acres, generally located on the north side of Sterling Road, approximately 500 feet east of Polity Trail, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Is the applicant present?
Quick second, yes.
Mr. Hoffman, your mic is off. If you could just please turn it on and state that you represent the applicant and that you've been sworn in.
Yes, this is Steve Hoffman from the Law Firm Hall of Judd, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. At this point, could all council members make any Jennings disclosures? State such ex parte communication, the nature of such communication.
I've had none.
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 Great. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadem, who already stated that he was sworn in, tend for the staff report.
The staff report is so entered into the record, Mayor and Council, this is a very, very basic item. This is the plat for a single home on one lot. We don't normally see plats for one lot. And the reason is, one home on one lot is exempt from plating unless there are more than two homes being built essentially adjacent to each other within a two-year period. That is the nature of the town's plating exemption. The idea being, if it's one individual splitting a lot or perhaps, in this case, building a home, building a home for himself and the children, in this case, three homes on three tracks, that be permitted as long as it's done over time so that you don't exceed the two homes on adjacent lots within two years. The idea is to allow this type of thing to happen, but not allow a production developer to come in and, you know, create numerous lots without plating. In this case, the other two properties were essentially created through a waiver of plat that the council approved earlier last year. It's approximately 28 acres of land holdings, and it included one approximately five-acre lot and one lot that was, I believe, 16 or 17 acres. And each one of those was approved to have one home on each. The understanding with the applicant was that to build that third home for the remaining children, they had to plot that one lot. And so, this is that lot that's being plotted. It's 4.62 acres, it'll be reduced to 4.59 after dedication for Sterling Road. Clearly, it exceeds the rural ranch's zoning requirements of two net acres. And one of the conditions of that earlier waiver of plat was that the petitioner conducted traffic study assessing the current state of traffic operations on Sterling Road and evaluating the impact of the full build-out of the entire 28-some-odd acre holdings, should it one day be fully developed, which is not the applicant's intent right now. And they did produce that study, staff reviewed it, and the study concludes that Sterling Road is currently operating within the acceptable level that the town established for Sterling Road. And that full build-out of the property would not trigger any overcapacity situation or need for specific traffic improvements. And with that, staff recommends approval, and I turn it back to council.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Hoffman, do you have any presentation? If not, you can always stipulate agreements with the staff presentation.
We do so stipulate that we agree with staff. Jeff did a good job of explaining the project. As he had indicated, it's one home on, or four and a half acres roughly.
Does any member of the Town Council have any questions of Mr. Hoffman and Jeff Cadem at this time?
I do.
Sure, please.
Yeah. Jeff, Jim Albretton. Jeff, I have two questions. If you answer the first one correctly, I won't need the second question. Can this plot be later subdivided?
You want the full answer, or do you want a yes or no?
Give me the full answer.
Because the answer is yes, it can, but it cannot be subdivided without coming back to the council. So, at some point in the future, in two or more years in the future, after the applicant pulls a building permit for this house, it would be allowable for the applicant to come back to you and ask to subdivide this property. I will tell you that I've seen the building plans, and I'm pretty sure that it wouldn't account, those plans are not accommodating to a lot split. I think it pretty much is put in the center of the property and is going to utilize this property. And I'll defer to Mr. Hoffman for the specifics on that, but that's my recollection. That's accurate. There is absolutely zero intent to split this lot. The house is actually located almost directly in the center of the lot. And there's also a lake in the front of the lot. So, it would render it virtually, I wouldn't say impossible, because everything, anything is possible, but extremely inconvenient to try to split this lot.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Russell, at this point, we will open it up to public. They need to state that they've been sworn in. Russell, if you could please take over public comment.
You got a Zoom bomber behind you, Keith.
I just got home from school, if you can believe that. Russell?
We have one speaker's hand raised, Christina Brownlow. Ms. Brownlow, did you wish to speak on this item?
I'm sorry, no, I apologize. I must have pushed the wrong button. I apologize.
Not a problem. We'll talk to you later. I don't believe we have anybody else. Keith, Mayor?
Seeing none, thank you, Russell. Public comment will be closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments?
No.
Mr. Hoffman, do you have any concluding comments?
No.
Right. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over you for deliberation. Like the last one, if the Town Council believes that the applicant has proven by competent substantial evidence that this application has met the criteria of code, it shall approve the item. If it does not, it can deny the item or it can approve the item with conditions. Again, in accordance with your charter, requires five affirmative votes, Mayor.
Good, thank you, Keith.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Is that subject to, are there stipulations on this one as well, right, Jeff?
No stipulation, yes.
Okay, so we're good. All right, very good. Any further discussion on this in council?
Mr. Mayor, my second question was answered, thank you. And now, just regarded the size of the house being put on the property, if it was subdivided later on, would that cause a problem? And that was answered, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no further discussion, Russell, if you can call the item.
Senator Mayor, Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Can I wait a second? Did we, we opened it up to the public, right? So, we're good there? All right, I apologize for interrupting, just want to make sure.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Item passes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, quasi judicial has concluded. Turnover to you for public comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, appreciate that. So, yeah, next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's any comments, any, open it up to you.
Mayor, if I may interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
I know we had the video that we wanted to show this evening. I wasn't sure at what point you wanted to do that.
Yes. Let's do that now. Thank you, thank you, Andy, for that reminder. We have, let me do a little bit of introduction on this. Robert Sirota did an amazing job. He, I think we're, most of us here are familiar with the Circle S Ranch over on Dyke Road, just south of Griffin on the east side of Dyke's. Beautiful property, been really kind of the heart of our town since well before our town was formed. And that, as I think most people are aware, that property has recently been sold and is about to be developed. And so, Robert took it upon himself to go out there a number of times and put together a really amazing video that I think if we can, it's tough to do a video on Zoom, so we'll see how that works. But we are, it is on the website. If you can't see it tonight, you definitely will be able to see it on the base, look it up on the website and look at it there. And I would really strongly urge everyone to take a look at it and really see it. Robert did an amazing job to really capture, I think, the essence of the property and the essence of Southwest Ranches. And this is definitely going to be a video that we turn over to the Historical Society and for preservation, because it's an amazing video. And Robert, I just publicly thank you that you took it upon yourself to do that. So, Russell, if you can, if you can start up this video, I'd appreciate it. Fantastic. Great. Just a stunning piece of property and really the heart of our town. So really glad that we were able to capture that, that Robert took that upon himself. So really great. We, the town has approached the builders that are going to be developing this property and requested to see if we could, if they would allow us on the property to kind of walk through it and take off some artifacts, maybe some of those those mileposts and some other items, maybe just we'll kind of walk it. And so we're, they and and the builders allowed us to do that. We're really appreciative of them that that they were, you know, allowing us to do that. And so however, our time is short. They're going to begin demolition next week. So we are looking to get some volunteers together to possibly get together perhaps on maybe Saturday morning, something like that. And walk the property with maybe be two or three pickup trucks and see what we can, what we can gather from there for preservation for our town. This is just an amazing piece of property. The family is an amazing, assessments are amazing folks that really are founders of this town and to preserve some pieces of that would be, I think, the right thing to do. So if you are, excuse me, if you are willing to do that and are willing to help us out, I would love to hear from you, or you can send a note to Andy. Either way, we're going to be gathering these together and putting together a little work detail for Saturday morning and have some fun over at the property and and see, see what elements we can preserve. So look forward to that. And and thank you for your participation, if you're willing, if you're able to do that.
First one.
Yeah.
With my pickup truck, I'll be first.
I'll be there with my truck, too.
Well, there we go. We got our three pickup trucks over there already. So that's great. All right, awesome.
I'm going to loan my truck to Andy.
All right. Okay, so with that, let me open up public comment.
Okay, Mayor, let's see. I believe Ms. Brownlow wanted to speak.
No, I know, Russell. I whatever I did, I'm so sorry. It was a mistake. I'm sorry to wasted your time. But anyway, hello, it's nice to see you guys.
All right, let's see. We have Mr. Kalis. Mr. Kalis, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I apologize for buttoning in before I come in late, and I didn't realize it was no public comment for this issue. Nevertheless, probably you're all thinking, oh, no, not him again. But yes, it's me again, and it's about the dump next door to me. The all the past meetings that we've had, I haven't heard any comments on it, so I don't want it to be a dead issue, because the dumping goes on day after day after day. Steve, Mayor Steve, I want to thank you for bringing out Mr. Siegel. But the answer that he had is build a higher hedge or something in that nature and just hide it. Dave, thank you for coming out. I think it would be safe to say that you were shocked at what you saw. Gary, you've been in this thing right from the beginning. Bob, you've called it a travesty. Jim, well, you're new at this. I invite you all to come and don't just do a drive-by. Come down my driveway. And halfway down, and you can look over the fence, and you can see what's happening over there. We've got, quite frankly, we've got another Vista View Park going on. Maybe you guys could talk to the Value Adjustment Board. I believe they're the ones that are giving the egg exemption. But because he has an egg exemption, I'm just reiterating what I've said in the past. It does shouldn't give him the right to do all that dumping. There's still three and four truckloads a day coming in, and those are the ones that I catch coming in. I, the whole neighborhood is upset. I don't, I wish you all would at least comment on this situation. Keith, maybe you could find something to to stop him from dumping. You know, he can raise all the fruit and vegetables he wants. As far as I'm concerned, he can have a nursery. But the dumping has really just got to stop. And I don't know where to go with this thing. I would love to hear some comments on it, because, as I said in the past three meetings, I haven't heard anything on this, and I don't want it to be a dead issue. You know, I could do all the complaining to anybody I want, but I'm just a small potatoes compared to what you guys could do. And you got the picture. I don't want to go on. Please make some comments on this. At least keep it alive. The dumping goes on day after day after day. It's about eight to ten foot high on the north side of the property. And I'm not the only one that's complaining about this. Maybe you don't hear it, but but I hear it. But nevertheless, that's all I have to say. But please make some comments. Tell me if I'm dead in the water. Tell me some. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
There's no further speakers, Mayor.
Any other speaker?
All right, great. All right, so closed public comment. Any board reports?
Yes, we have a couple of people raising their hand, Mayor. The first is Rose Allbritton. Ms. Allbritton, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. You'll have to bear with me. This is my first time speaking. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilman. And any staff that's there. I want to say for a minute, I want to thank you all. Everything you've done through this pandemic, even though the doors have been closed, we've always been able to contact you. You've gone ahead, you've worn different caps, you know, helping out everybody. So I want to thank you for that. Also, I'd like to take a minute on, you know, on each of our boards, we have a liaison from the staff. I don't know if everybody really knows that, excuse me. But they have their day job, and then they're on each board meeting giving their time. And I'd like to say thank you to one of our special staff liaisons, Susan Kuntz. She's always there for us. She helps us in every way, and I'd like to thank her for all the support that she gives us at all of our meetings. I'm here tonight because I have a special request. And that is, we've had a project since last April, and the project has been connected to Founder's Park. This park is on Griffin Road, just west of CVS. If you've ever been on the park, it's different from all the other parks. It's a quiet, tranquil park. It's got a couple of benches. It's got a large pond there. It's got a gazebo. Once you're away from and at the park, it's really a nice park to be at. It has a wall that is connected to CVS, and we've gotten okay through the thanks of the town to put a mural there. So we began a process of putting out contests, so to speak, to young artists that maybe are in art school or at the high school to see if they wanted to try to put the mural up and give us some idea of what they would do, send some drawings in, and perhaps it would help their portfolios. We didn't get a great response on that. And as we started talking more, we realized that it was really a big undertaking. Maybe needed somebody a little more professional or get assistance, you know, for the people, but we still didn't get any response. And the responses we got, they they wanted to be paid for their effort and their, you know, talent. So we're coming to you as councilmen, and we are requesting to be put on a wish list. And it's right now a $5,000 wish list. It's really zero to 5,000, depending on bids that are coming in. Susan's going to have to put it out for bid and go through everything that we're supposed to go through and then come back to you. But I wanted to be first in case, you know, there's in the budget. For wish lists. And that's about where we stand. So I don't know if you can ask any questions at this point or take it under, you know, advisement, you know, or come back to our board or liaison. You tell me how it works.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Rose. Yeah, so we'll have the opportunity during council member comments to kind of respond our thoughts to it, but air timing couldn't be better, because we're just now pulling together the budget process, and so it would fit right in with that. So but thank you for bringing that forth, and thanks for all that your board is doing.
Well, thank you. And, you know, I know you all get a lot of complaints. I think that I thank you every once in a while. I don't think people realize how much you all do, and I'm getting it first.
Great, thank you. All right. Any other board reports? You're on mute, Russell.
Sorry about that, Mayor. The next speaker is George Morris.
Mr. George?
Yes. Yes, hello. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. First of all, I'd like to say commend Rod for that outstanding PowerPoint was very informative. I actually learned a lot of stuff myself. I've been out in the town for almost thirty thirty years, and I actually learned some new things regarding everything that was going on there, and I want to thank Rod for that. And Rod is also the liaison for the Drainage Board, and I'm thanking him for all that he does. I just want to recap a couple of things. I did do a board report back in our February eleventh meeting. For the town council, on February eleventh, we had a meeting. I did a board report then regarding our Drainage Board meeting on February third, but I'll just recap a few things with regards to some discussions that we had for some residential projects and some preliminary discussions for fill removal and penalties. That was also mentioned during that workshop. Our board is working on that very diligently to try and come up with some answers regarding exactly how to handle the filling problem that we have in our town. Also talked about some asphalt work on one hundred and eighty-eight regarding some of the projects that we're working on, but that's pretty much my board report for the second time this month. I appreciate the honor of chairing that board and look forward to continuing that job and working within my community. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, George.
Thank you. What else, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm also, that being said, with the drainage court.
What happened? Looks like we lost Mr.
We lost you, George.
Zoom anymore.
All right, let's let's move on to the next one. We can come back to George.
The next speaker, Mayor, is Jason Halberg. Mr. Halberg, can you hear us?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Jason Halberg, Chair of the Comprehensive Planning Board. First off, I just wanted to say how proud and honored I am to be part of such an amazing and talented group of folks on our board. Currently, our board is working, has been working pretty busy on two separate items, both of which we feel align with the spirit and intent of keeping our town as a rural equestrian community. The first item would be for the proposal of an ordinance that would require new residential developments to set aside a certain amount of land for horses and barns. After working through some of the preliminary details on this ordinance, it was suggested to the board that the council host a workshop on this topic in order to be able to provide better guidance for us. So based on that, I had tabled this discussion on this topic until we get some further guidance, which we're looking forward to. We have also worked through a survey that I know many of the folks have spent some time thinking through and providing some great feedback, not just from them, I'm sure, but also from talking with residents. So of course, we were excited to share that survey with you guys, you know, for your workshop. The second item that the board has been working on was just approved in our last meeting through an unanimous vote. It was for the approval of amending language within our Unified Land Development Code to restrict certain changes to zoning districts. This ordinance would clarify that any rezoning request for residential properties only be rezoned to the least dense zoning district, which it is contiguous to. The board has also requested that we review and update the town's comprehensive planning code in order to mirror the same language. Of course, you know, I welcome if Jeff would like to add any more clarity to that, but again, this was a unanimous vote, and we're pretty excited to pass this on to the council. It's really all I have at the moment, and again, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Jason, and thanks for the board, all the work they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Halberg. Okay, let's go back to George Morris, if we may. I think I inadvertently cut him off, actually, so let me.
Yes, hello again. Yes. Yes, when I finished my drainage report, I just wanted to move into something else. I'm also a board member in the Astronaut Parks Foundation, and we've been working on different ways of raising money in the community. And I just wanted to bring up, and maybe it's you council members, I've talked to a few of you guys, and maybe you can talk about it during your session. But one of the things that we're working towards and have an idea of is doing some sort of carnival within the town, something over a holiday weekend, maybe President's Day of next year, which is more than a year away. And whether it even comes to fruition, even doing it this year, maybe two years out, we're not sure. But we've been very successful in hosting the car show, you know, the right, the Rancher, the car show there. And it's been successful in raising money for our parks and recreation fields and stuff that we have throughout the town. So again, back to my original, our idea was to try and host a carnival, some sort of, like you would see at a church, some something short. It would possibly be a location would be on the corner of Griffin and Dykes on that area that we have there, which would be large enough and would be suitable and would, you know, be easy for traffic to go in and out. But I'm just looking for some sort of input. I don't have the answers. I don't have the, you know, the pros and cons. It's just something that our board is looking forward to, to maybe pursuing, but we couldn't obviously do it without the permission. uh, pursuing, but we couldn't obviously do it without the permission and consent of the council. So if that's something that you could consider, feel free to reach out to me or any board member on the Astronaut Foundation. And I'd love to hear any input that you may or may not have, uh, during council member comments. So, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate everything that, uh, we do, uh, and we look forward to serving, again, our community and improving our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
George. Okay, Mayor, the next and final, uh, board report would be from Debbie Green. Ms. Green, can you hear us?
Hi, I hear you. Just make is Kathy here or no?
Uh, no, I don't see Kathy on the call.
I don't see her, no.
Okay, so then I'll speak, uh, give a quick Ed, Ed Board Report. Our Flamingo flocking has been going tremendously well. So thanks again to everybody and hopefully we can just keep the fun moving. Um, we've so far raised, uh, just got to about $17,000. And, um, I have to say, it's definitely worthwhile coming and speaking at the council meetings and staying on to the end because we got a very generous donation from the Bergerons after the last council meeting. But, um, a- again, um, if, to get any information on the flocking, you can contact Deborah Rosega at Town Council. I mean, not at Town Council, Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Okay, Mayor, that was our final speaker.
All right, great. Appreciate it. Um, next item is council member comments. Anyone want to volunteer to go first?
Yeah, let me go ahead. Uh, yeah, the, the, the one issue that I, uh, wanted to, um, bring back up, uh, or bring up concerns the Rural Arts Advisory Board that, uh, Ms. Albretton had discussed. Um, I had mentioned this to Andy and brought it up with him that it is an, um, important project that, um, hopefully we do have the funding for. And, uh, and I'd, I'd like to make a motion for, um, the $5,000 if it's available in the budget. For, for, um, a- a- and this is primarily, the primarily issues are for, um, preparing the wall for, um, painting because we don't know what is wrong with it, sandblasting or, um, uh, pressure cleaning it and primer-ing it, making sure it's ready for, um, a project. We don't know if there's anything wrong with it. Um, so I would like to make that as a motion.
Uh, David, uh, is that for this year's budget or, uh, so you're looking to take it out of this year's funds?
Uh, if it's available.
Okay.
Anyone want to second that?
I'll give it a second.
Okay, thank you. I think that, um, we should probably give a little bit of background on this. Uh, you know, if you were at the, uh, Rural Arts, uh, meeting, you know exactly what, uh, David's talking about. But, uh, for residents that may not be aware, um, we have that, uh, the park, um, just east, just west of Flamingo, um, and there is a wall there that goes up against, uh, it's either a CVS or Walgreens, depending on whether you're talking to Robert or not, but, uh, it, uh, there's a wall there that, um, would lend itself to a mural of our town. And so, um, the Rural Arts Board has been going out to, um, look for bids, working through the town to get bids for artists to do some work there. And, um, uh, we had originally, uh, Andy, we, we had requested Andy provide some basic funding for it, which was $500, which was allowed. And so that was there. And based on that, we went out, but really found out, the board found out that this is, um, between, uh, sandblasting the wall, um, and then putting down a primer on the wall and then doing the painting itself and then putting a seal coat on the painting on top of it. Um, and with the cost of paint, uh, being, um, higher than it normally is, um, this is, it's a lot to ask out of a donation for an artist. And then on top of that, the artist to donate all their time to do it. So, um, that was a pretty big ask and I think that was one of the reasons why, we got a limited number of responses and, and frankly, even with the one response, we would have to have worked out something financially to do it. So, um, so to, to do this properly, the board is requesting, um, and David has put the motion out there that funds be provided to $5,000 to fund this project. And, um, and I probably misstated something because Andy is about to correct me, which is awesome. And so, um, so we, we would need to begin the whole process over, kind of the bidding process over again, if this was approved. So Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, not, not at all a correction there. Just want to add to it. Uh, council member Kozinski and I had a conversation about it the other day. We met with December, yesterday morning and did task her with trying to get some numbers together on pressure cleaning that wall and, and inspecting it for damage, uh, doing some cleanup of some of the landscaping along there. And, and so we, we are in the process of pulling those numbers together. I, I don't know what that's gonna cost because I, I'm not sure what we're gonna find at this point, but I did direct her to go, go, you know, do a little digging and, and, and bring those numbers back to me so that I have that information. Uh, so we're still in our, I'll say, discovery process on that. And, and certainly be very happy to keep that moving and report back to the council.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Um, I, I look forward to the other council member comments. I'll, while I'm speaking, I'll just do mine and then I'll, I'll be quiet. Um, I, I definitely support this project. I think the Rural Arts Board is doing, um, you know, an amazing job in this project. I think will be something that the town will be proud of. My hesitation in voting for this particular measure, I'm still debating because it just came up. But, uh, my hesitation with it is that we don't, we haven't got the final numbers yet on what this is gonna cost. And, um, and the timeframe, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable setting aside the money in next year's budget. But if for the right project, I know this year would be great to get it done this year. So, um, I, I, I personally would like a few more details back. I think maybe next council meeting, um, a similar, uh, motion would, we would have a lot more, um, numbers and information to vote on. So that's, that's my only hesitation. If I vote no, it's not because I don't believe in the project. I do believe in the project, but I, I just, um, would like some more information.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can comment, um, I, I second the motion, so I wanted to get into, as a discussion item, I think it's a good project. We don't know the numbers. You're right. Um, uh, I was under the impression that it was a, a not to exceed type of a number. And it wasn't really stated to which, uh, it's kind of nebulous as to what budget it's could, would come out of, whether it be this year or next year. And maybe we need to go back and rethink this and bring it forth as a, a, a project, uh, by next month, you know, which we have. I'm all for the project. I'm in full support of it. Vote on it now or we want to wait till next month when we have more numbers. You know, I'll go either way on that.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I, I feel the same way as both of you. I totally support the project. This is a great idea and I've supported it since they came up with the idea about a year, year and a half ago. Um, but I'm also with you on the numbers. Um, I think we need to understand what it's gonna cost to, you know, prepare the wall for the painting and then we've got to understand what that's gonna cost. So, I think we, we do need to do some more due diligence. Um, I think I'd be more comfortable voting for this if, uh, if we knew the numbers and probably had something of a timeline as well.
Good point. Yeah, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, like I said, I agree. I think this project, if you're traveling, uh, east on Griffin, that's, that would be the last thing that you would see as you leave town. And I think the artists have said that it would reflect our town. It would be what we see in our town, not some abstract thing that you'd see down in Wood Moon in Miami. It would absolutely reflect the lifestyle that we have here in different panels. I think there'd be total of six panels done. Uh, and, and the cost, like you said, I'm not sure what the cost would be if you set a $5,000 budget and it was $7,000. Finished, I agree with that. But the, uh, actual, uh, painting of the six panels and stuff was about half of that. And some of that time was volunteer work by the artists themselves. So, uh, you know, let's, I, I do agree that a budget, you know, needs to be set, the numbers need to be set. I think that can be done fairly soon.
Um, how about, how about this? Um, Kozinski, um, why don't we, if we put this on our, uh, next month's, uh, as a discussion item? And we'll have to accumulate some numbers that we can get to, uh, and we can better, you know, have a better handle on the project. So I think everybody supports it. I think we're just, uh, we're, we're throwing a dart at a dartboard right now. It's kind of, kind of how I'm seeing it.
They, they, um, now I did make the, uh, motion, um, and I would, um, so I guess be interested in, um, I, I will amend the motion to, uh, put it as a discussion item on next month's agenda. But I, I did hear, um, Ms. Albretton, um, make the request and, um, I did attend that meeting. I'm aware of the, um, how important the issue is to the Arts Advisory Board. And, and the important part is, is that the Arts Advisory Board really doesn't have, um, the motive to go out and fundraise. And that's, that, that's kind of important that I feel, uh, about this. They, they can't go out and, and do flocking or they can't go out and, and do a car show. This is, um, they get their money from us. And that, that was the, the, the reason that I made the motion, but, um, I, I will amend my motion to put it on next month's agenda as a discussion matter. And, um, I'll, I'll amend.
Okay, and I'll, I'll amend my second, you know, to reflect that. Uh, it probably doesn't need it because anybody can put anything on the agenda. But, uh, it just codifies it and solidifies it a little bit.
Okay, great. Um, is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see anyone here.
Seeing none? Any further council comment?
You got one person that just popped up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I, I really appreciate that the board and the council members have, um, support the project. And I was, uh, present while Rose made her presentation and I just want to thank, uh, Rose on behalf of the board for making that presentation to council. And, um, whatever we can do on our end as a board to expedite this so that, uh, we can hopefully get this on this year's budget, uh, we just ask that you please let us know and we'll, we'll make sure that whatever needs to happen on our end happens. Um, whether it be, you know, bidding as far as the work that needs to be done before or after. But we'd love to have this, you know, be on this year's budget. So if there's anything that we can do on our end to expedite it, please, by all means, let us know.
Awesome. Great. Thank you, Barbara.
Just a quick comment on that, Steve, um, concerning budgets. Folks, even if we, uh, don't, we decide not to fund it out of this year's budget, uh, next year's budget actually starts in November. So it's this year. The fiscal calendar is November to October.
October to September, but
up.
Thank you. Good point.
So it's sooner we can get it done.
That's right. That's right.
I called a question, I guess.
Yeah, I saw a quick hand there, but I don't see now, so I think we're good. Okay, um, any further, any further council comment? All right, seeing none. Uh, Russell, if you can call the question?
This is to, this is for discussion next meeting, correct?
Just to move the item to the discussion on the next meeting.
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes.
Your break crews?
Yes.
Great, thank you. David, uh, I think we're in the middle of your council member comments. If you
That was actually, that, uh, the only issue I really had to speak about, um, was the, uh, Arts Advisory Board. Um, I felt it was a really important issue, um, the Founder's Wall. It, it, it reflects, we got, they got some good ideas of what to do with this and I just hope it, uh, goes forward.
Very good. Yep, thank you, David. All right. Thank you, Gary.
Um, yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief, uh, as usual. Uh, just a few things to bring up. Um, the mulch is still there in the five acres. There's still a truckload there if somebody wants to get it. This will probably be the last time that I'll be mentioning it. And, uh, you just, it, you shovel it yourself in your pickup truck and take it away and use as much as you want. Um, another item is the, uh, license plate reader camera, uh, that is in, in the process. We hope to have that up and running at Rolling Oaks by, uh, March, which is next week. Uh, Russell or Andy, if one of you could talk about the COVID testing at the park, uh, this coming March. It's kind of important and, uh, if you could elaborate on it, I'd appreciate it. Um, right next to our new Town Hall mailbox is our new Town Hall Flag Retirement Box, which now has a, if they're now triplets, there is a new Town Hall Shoe, uh, deposit for, for used shoes for National Shoe Day. And Russell, if you could, uh, expand on that a little bit when it comes, when we get around to it. But if any new, I mean, a new or, uh, uh, used shoes that are in fairly good condition that you would like to donate, uh, you can just drop it in the box. It's right outside. And if you've got that really great pair of shoes that your brother-in-law bought you 10 years ago and you, you wanna, you wanna run a great place to unload it, that's it. Because there's plenty of people out there that could, uh, uh, you know, utilize it and it's all put to good use. Um, Mayor, you're gonna talk about what's coming out in the newsletter and, uh, okay, I'll leave that to you. Um, as you noticed behind me, we have a, uh, a replacement Rolling Oak sign on the graphic behind me that was, uh, installed today. Uh, the other one was obliterated in a, in a car crash. Uh, fortunately, nobody was hurt. Uh, and this one, uh, the replacement was put up, uh, this morning and it looks great, looks brand new. And when you drive in, you'll definitely know where you're at day or night. It's, it's, uh, really stands out. And, uh, to, to, uh, one of the speakers of the boards, um, George Morris was speaking about, uh, a carnival, uh, for the Parks Foundation. Um, I have no problem supporting that. Just a question of when we can do it with the COVID-19 testing and COVID-19, uh, vaccination program. And, uh, when, when we can, when things will start opening up, I have no problem supporting that at all whatsoever. And the last thing I want to mention it is, uh, concerning Mr. Kalas' is, uh, Kalas' is, uh, uh, so-called farm that's next door to him. I went by there the other day, uh, with George Morris, as a matter of fact. And we stopped and we were talking about what a, uh, how upsetting this was and, uh, what, trying to figure out what we could do if there was anything we could do for it in the drainage project. Or we were just looking at it from different angles. We didn't come up with anything, unfortunately. But we did, uh, uh, we did discuss it, uh, as to if there was anything that we could do from, from, from that board's point of view. Didn't come up with anything yet, but it's, it's, it's there. It's, it's in, it's in, uh, as a discussion item. And, uh, that's all I have there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I guess it's my turn.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Uh, first of all, I want to say I'm very proud of that sign at Rolling Oaks. It's green and white and I appreciate that. I'll take credit for it. I'm, I'm not proud. But I, I do want to say that, uh, I, uh, have had the pleasure of meeting a couple of officers that are now using our new laser handheld, uh, radar gun. And they're absolutely thrilled with it. Uh, I know that we had the Chief of Police on from Davy a couple of meetings back, council meeting back, and he made an effort to step up enforcement. And it's not only enforcement now on Griffin and 172nd, but they're in the communities now. They're on 166. They're on 188, 186. I see them out in the neighborhoods. Uh, I see them throughout Sunshine Ranches and, and they're writing tickets. And, uh, they're writing tickets at 40 mile an hour, not 45 or 50 like before. They're actually writing tickets at 40 mile an hour. Whether the judge throws them out or they're accepted or they have to pay a ticket clinic or whatever it is, uh, you might get one or two of those, but pretty soon they're gonna slow down. And I've noticed here, believe it or not, on Racetrack Way, 165th Avenue, things are starting to slow down. We still have one or two that come through pretty fast, but, but things are slowing down. And I'm still, uh, in, uh, I've got a mindset that I would like to have, maybe if it's a Zoom meeting or whatever it would be, some kind of a, a community from Sunshine Ranches, uh, rolling if it's a Zoom meeting or whatever it would be, some kind of a, uh, community from Sunshine Ranches, uh, Rolling Oaks, Meadows, Dean's Ranches, Country Estates, maybe a group of citizens get together and discuss what we can or can't do with the traffic in the area. And my signs, I still have about 20 signs left. If there's any of the residents out there, I see there's about 40 something people on them. If you're interested in a sign, it is green and white. And, uh, the, the stand comes with it. So, you know, give me a call and let me know. And, uh, I can get those out to you. And, uh, I think this project that we talked about earlier with the wall as a way for people to see that Sunshine Ranches, uh, and Green Meadows and Country Estates, Rolling Oaks, Dean's Ranches, that Southwest Ranches, and that's what that mural will represent. Go forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my turn. Uh, Gary, since you didn't bring up, um, quasi judicial tonight, I guess I'll, it'll be mine to educate. Good. So folks, what I'm talking about is in the, the early part of the meeting tonight. We, we had a quasi judicial session where we looked at some, uh, platino changes uh, and a subdivision of a lot. Now Keith said it and I probably didn't pick up on it for a long time, but essentially the council is playing the role of a judge. And just like, uh, a judge in court, they have to evaluate the evidence. And you heard Keith say competent, I'm not sure exactly the terminology he used, but, uh, you know, competent evidence that they're following the law and, uh, they, whoever the applicants are, are, you know, they review with the town planner. They have attorneys. They work through all of this before they come to us. Now, the important thing to realize is we really can't say no without incurring a lawsuit. Uh, if they've met the law, our town code for what they're intending on doing with their division of the property. Uh, you know, you, you can't divide smaller than two net acres, uh, excuse me, one net acre or two net acres, depending on where you live, or two and a half acres, uh, if you're in the, uh, ranches categories, whether it's agricultural, A1 ranches or rural ranches. And Keith, that's something I did want to talk to you about offline. Uh, I, I got a copy of our map. And, um, we'll, we'll talk about it later. But in any case, folks, the folks that were here earlier today, uh, tonight to talk about their, the subdivisions and changes they wanted to make, they complied with the law. If I live next door to the person, I live two doors down from the person. I didn't like what they were planning on doing. They told me. I really can't stop it as a council member. If they're complying with the law, we have to approve it. We don't really have a choice there. Now, in one of the scenarios earlier, I guess we were, um, we, we allowed, uh, uh, something that's not in conformance with the code. Um, we, we, I think we can do that, but we, we can't be more strict than the code. We, we can't say you can't divide your property into anything less than five acres. We all want to keep the open spaces. I think everybody, when I, when I bought my property in 88, Southwest Ranches was all open spaces. There were a bunch of farms. There were a lot of streets, but there were no houses. A lot of empty, uh, a lot of empty spaces, open spaces. We're trying to fix those problems through the comp plan and, you know, through other methods that you'll hear about here at the council meetings. But we can't violate, we, we can't say no if they're in compliance with the code. And folks, if you have any questions about this, feel free to call me. Um, you know, my, my cell phone number is, uh, is in the newsletters, uh, or send me an email. My email's in there as well. But this, this is pretty important because I know, uh, we've, we've had a couple of these that have gotten pretty contentious. And, you know, people send us emails requesting, demanding, talking about the impact to their lifestyle. We get all that. We, we live in town here too. We've, we've seen all this stuff go on. But if they comply with the law, uh, there, there's not much else we can do. Uh, moving on, uh, George Kalas, I feel for you. I wish we can come up with a way, uh, to, to stop what's going on next door. Um, unfortunately, we don't get to make the call on agricultural. So I, I know you'll, you'll keep us, uh, posted on what's going on over there and, and we'll continue to look and, and see what we can do. Um, I like that new Roca sign. That is, uh, that, that's a cool sign, Gary. I, I want to talk to you at, at some point, or maybe, um, somebody who lives in Roca can tell me where you guys got that sign because we need some signs for country estates too. And maybe whoever put those together can, can do the same for us. Um, regarding the Davy PD, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, one of the officers. She patrols my street almost every afternoon. So if I want to talk to a Davy PD, I go out there, two, three, four o'clock in the afternoon and she always comes past. They are definitely enforcing speed limits on the side streets now. I had a long conversation with her about it. You know, everybody typically sees them, uh, sitting on Griffin Road in a couple of different places. And, uh, you know, I won't disclose all their places, but, uh, they are now starting to go into the side streets because resident complaints on speeding are probably the thing I hear the most these days. So they're, they're responding to our requests. They're, they're getting into the neighborhoods now. And as well, uh, as Jim brought up, they've, they've got a new radar device, which makes them more effective as well. Um, oh, also regarding the carnival, uh, I definitely support a carnival. I'm, I think, uh, the location is great also because that's a place where you can't miss it. If you're coming into town and you live in Weston, maybe all that cut through traffic will see the, uh, the, um, uh, signs for the carnival and show up and, and make it a smashing success. So I definitely support that with the parks, uh, the parks committee. That's all I have, Steve. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Uh, I just have a few items, uh, but I think they'll be fairly quick. First one, um, just to kind of piggyback on what Bob was just talking about, the, that new, um, laser gun that we have for speeding, totally awesome. You know, it was one of the things that really frustrated me, uh, was seeing the, the tickets, the Davy PD was writing a lot of tickets, but it seemed like they were all out on, the vast majority were on the major roads, not on the interior roads. And it was really because the equipment, the equipment was in the vehicle. And if the vehicle was on the side of a, a small road, uh, everybody could see it and everybody slowed down. And so there were no tickets, um, and it wasn't really a motivational factor there. Now with this laser gun, the, the car is off the road and, um, they're able to, you know, be a little bit more stealthy out there. And, um, and, uh, that's a good thing. So, so the, the bottom line is, you know what? The bottom line is, let's just, let's just stay within the speed limit. Let's, uh, you know, for the protection of, of our, our kids, the protection of our animals. Um, let's just do the right thing and stay within the speed limit. Um, I wanted to do a shout out to Rod and Emily. Kudos to you both. Fantastic job on the, uh, the drainage workshop that we had earlier this evening at six o'clock. Um, I know there was a tremendous amount of work that went into that, uh, from both of you, pulling it all together and, um, just making it all happen. It, it came off great. We had great participation by our partners in, you know, South Florida Water Management, uh, um, in, in Broward and Central Water. So really fantastic. And Representative Bartman was there as well. So I think we really got the message across. I think that, uh, it was a great education for everyone. Um, and if you were not able to make it, it was recorded and, uh, it may not be available immediately. I know it usually takes a day or two before we can get it, get it up on there. But I would hope, uh, Russell, maybe you can speak to this, but I would hope we can get this on the, on the website in the next, uh, in the next week or so. So, uh, but great job, uh, Rod, Emily. Thank you so much. Fantastic job. Um, a couple of other items I wanted to talk about in the, in the newsletter that you're gonna be getting, uh, there's going to be a survey included in that. And, um, you know, time flies. When we first started talking about, like, wait, I just, just completed a survey. Well, I did complete a survey, but it was probably like five years ago, five or six years ago. Thank you, David. Yeah, there it is. So, um, uh, so we're gonna send it out again. It's important, you know? It's important, uh, to make sure that as a council, we are representing your wishes. And as an administration, that we are passing on to the administration, those wishes accurately and properly so that we can represent you the, you know, the way we should. And that, I know that's really important to all of us. So, um, please take the time to complete that survey. It's not super short. It's not super long, um, but it's all important. So, um, it may, it may take 10 or 15 minutes, but, um, it's really, it's really important. Uh, there's some great questions on there. There's some questions on there that are the same as questions we asked five years ago. Um, and the idea is to kind of see what the trends are. Are we seeing more answers one way or another so that we can, we can kind of understand what direction the town is, is moving towards? So, um, please, please take that out. Please fill it out and return it so that we can get it. The more, the more responses we get, the better information is and the better we can, uh, represent you all. So, um, please do that. Um, George, George Kalas, thank you, George, for, um, coming, uh, on the, the meeting again tonight to kind of keep this item alive and reiterate it. You know, I, I know that all of our, all of our hearts are with you. We know what you're, what you're dealing with. And we know that, um, it's a difficult situation. We've all been out there and seen it. Um, so we'll keep looking for potential options for solutions. I, if I was there, I'll just say, if I was there, I would encourage your neighbor to go ahead and, and, and grow that, that hedge between the two so you don't have to see it all the time. But we'll definitely want to look for a more prominent solution than that. So, so thanks for bringing that up. Thanks for keeping it, uh, active and we will keep working on it. Um, let's see, uh, the carnival. George, thanks for bringing that up. And, you know, um, I, I, I support it. I, I want more information on it. Really the only, my, my biggest concern with it is just the sound for the neighbors that are right there. We want to make sure that we're, we're sensitive to that. But, um, overall, I think it's, you know what? I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know any other town that enjoys a good party and an opportunity to get out and enjoy being with one another. And, um, and the carnival would be fantastic way to do that. So, um, I think it's a great idea. I think, uh, we probably need to do a little work on mechanics of it. But, but I would love to see it become a reality and, uh, we'll enjoy it when it does. So. And then, um, the last thing I wanted to touch on was just to kind of reiterate what we talked about before. Um, this is unofficial, but, uh, let's make it official. I'll be at, uh, Town Hall on Saturday morning at nine o'clock with my pickup. And I think there'll be a couple of other pickups there as well. And, um, we're gonna head over to Circle S Ranch there at, um, Dykes and just south of Griffin. And we'll, we'll kind of walk the property, just walking the property will be amazing to tell you the truth. And, um, we'll, uh, we'll do some things to pick up some of the, uh, some of the items that, uh, we can preserve. Uh, this is a real piece of the history of our town. Let's not lose it. Let's save some pieces of it. Yeah, Bob, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, Steve, uh, do you think we need to bring some sledgehammers and shovels along to pull those things out? Or are we just gonna pull them out with our trucks all at once?
Uh, no, I, good point, good point. No, I think some sledgehammer, some shovels, maybe some hammers, regular hammers. Um, you know, cause, uh, it, it, that might be, might be a good, good thing to do. Makes sense. Yeah, Jim.
Hey, rather than showing up at Town Hall, you could come here. It's a lot closer and we could meet here. I got a big driveway. Instead of running all the way to Town Hall and coming back, I'm only a block or two away. So, I mean, if you want to be here, I'd be happy to have you.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, everybody knows where Town Hall is. So it'd be no confusion. That's all. But thanks, thanks for, for volunteering, Jim. You are, you're right. You're right in the neighborhood.
Well, why don't, why don't we just move behind Tom Thumb?
All right. There you go. There you go. Everybody knows where Tom Thumb is too. Let's meet, let's redo that. We'll meet at Tom Thumb at nine AM on Saturday morning. All are welcome.
And you're buying coffee, correct?
And, um, Jim's buying coffee.
Yeah.
You know what? You know what? I will make, I will make a Dunkin' Donuts run and I will be happy to bring, uh, some coffee and some donut holes.
There we go.
Great idea, Jim.
I'll be there with you.
All right. All right. That concludes my comments. Um, let's move on to, uh, legal comments.
Sure, Mayor. I'll, I'll be brief tonight. Um, just to give the council an update, I sent everyone an email earlier today. And just so the public can hear it as well, it has no bearing on the town. But, uh, Pembroke Pines, uh, won another appeal against Core Civic Group based on an equal protections claim. Uh, we were monitoring it just to see it, uh, for fun. But, uh, the reality has no bearing on us at all. We did not have an equal protections claim in our, uh, case. Um, and, uh, Andy advised me, they did speak to, uh, Mr. Dodge. Uh, Pines will be issuing a, a press release, but they made it clear, according to them, that in their press release, they did not mention at all that this had to do with anything with the town. Uh, so they wanted to keep it totally separate. So I just wanted the public to know, in case they saw an article, that this did not impact us. Said anyway, this is a total different case, uh, than the town's case. Um, so I just want to bring that to your attention. Uh, Andy had a good call this week, uh, with, uh, um, the Senator who's sponsoring Senate Bill 88 in the Florida Legislature. Um, you know, uh, with yin and yang, I, I wanted Ying to make that call. So I'm appreciative that Andy was, was on with him. And, uh, as a result, uh, after the call, I was briefed and drafted bill language to try to amend that bill to have less impact on town. Uh, that is the bill that deals with agritourism and parties, uh, within communities. So, uh, if our language is accepted, uh, the bill will have, uh, significantly less impact on the town of Southwest Ranches. So it was a busy week with the Florida Legislature, but everything else is good, Mayor. Uh, that concludes legal comments.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Okay, administrative comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A few things, just to, to, to pick up on that one, on, on Senate Bill 88. Uh, Keith is correct. I had a, a Zoom call yesterday with our lobbyist and Senator Brodeur, who's the sponsor of that. Uh, I'll say he was, he was very receptive to our concerns. He referred to some of those things as unintended consequences and told me that he had heard the same thing from, uh, Seminole County, which is where he's from. So, uh, I, I do feel pretty good that we're gonna have some progress there. Uh, I was on the call because I was, you know, better, maybe that part with Brodeur than Keith might be, but Keith is much better drafted in legislation. So we're a team and, and we got it done and up to our lobbyists right away. So, uh, you know, we'll, we're putting our best effort on that and I felt pretty good. I thought he was, he was very receptive to our concerns. So I'll share that with you. Uh, I do want to shout out to Rod and Emily for tonight's presentation. I know how difficult that is to bring three different agencies and partners together to, to put a presentation and then turn it over to, to others to speak and go through it. Uh, I think they covered an awful lot of ground. I'm, I'm only sorry that we ran out of time. I did email the presentation to all of you earlier. Uh, and we'll print out a hard copy. It'll be in your box. Obviously, if there are any residents that would like that as well, we're, we're, we're more than happy to make that available to them. And to address any concerns that council residents have coming out of that. So, uh, thank you, Rod and Emily. That was, that was terrific. Uh, Mayor, you referenced the survey, the community survey that'll be going out. We're gonna put a collection box in front of Town Hall to go with the mailbox and the flag box and the shoe box. Uh, we'll have a, for a short term, we'll have during, during Town Hall hours, we'll put a box out so that, and we'll mark it appropriately. So the residents know they can drop that, they survey off there and, and save themselves the, the postage on that. Uh, on CC Homes, I think you're set to do the walkthrough for Saturday morning. The only other thing I'll, I'll let you know and, and residents know if they see some activity over there. Uh, Davy Police, the, the SWAT team has expressed some interest in doing some training exercises over there before the structures are demolished and, and CC Homes have been receptive to that. So I'll just say to any resident, I don't know when that'll be. I know they're meeting out there tomorrow afternoon to plan that. But certainly any residents who are hearing this, if you see police activity out there in the next week or so, it's, it's train, purely training activity. There's, there's nothing going on beyond that. Uh, one last thing I want to touch on before, I'm gonna throw it to, to Russell for a couple of things. You were all very complimentary about the, the laser radar gun that's out there. You've all seen it in use. Uh, if you like that, you're gonna like this even more. On the next agenda, we are bringing you an item to purchase three more handheld radar guns. We're going to radar instead of laser. Uh, the lasers are, are wonderful. If you're on Griffin Road and three cars are coming towards you and you want to pick out one car in particular, the radar is just as effective on our side streets where you have one car coming towards you. And they are significantly less expensive. So we'll be adding three to those. One of the wonderful things about those on the side streets, which, which you all alluded to, is because they're not mounted in the car, they can now park their car out of sightline and stand outside and, you know, it's, it's side of the road and, and pick off speeding cars. So I think they're gonna be very successful with that. I know the officers are excited to have, uh, new toys to play with. And as long as they're playing with those toys and they're protecting our community, that's, that's And as long as they're playing with those toys and they're protecting our community, that's, that's a win all the way around. Uh, other than that, I do want to throw it to Russell to speak about the COVID testing. And he may want to add a little bit about the shoe drive because I know he was responsible for that. And other than that, Mayor, I'm done. Other than turning it over to Russell. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, Russell.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor and Andy. Uh, so, yeah, we are excited to offer another COVID-19 testing program at the Rolling Oaks Barn, uh, in partnership with Urgent Med. Um, we've, uh, established a 800 number or 877 number that they can call to schedule their appointments. They can also visit the website. Um, the phone number, if I can give it out very quickly, is 877-851-0064. The website address is, uh, HTTPS, uh, forward slash, forward slash, urgentmed.us, forward slash SWR. I know it's a lot to take down very quickly. Um, that information is available on our social media pages and our website uh, for people to get that information. And, uh, they can pre-register also at that testing event or by calling or visiting the website for the, uh, COVID-19 vaccine. At this time, Urgent Med has not been, uh, provided any vaccines at this time, but when they receive their shipment of vaccine, they will call the people that are pre-registered with them. And so long as they meet the, uh, age, uh, category guidelines established by the state, they will call the people in those, in, in that order, once they get the, um, once they get the vaccines. But the COVID, uh, testing event is going to be Thursday, Friday and Saturday, March 11th, 12th and 13th at the Rolling Oaks Barn. And, uh, we look forward to seeing people there. We're also going to be doing as part of the testing, uh, not just the regular COVID-19 testing, but also, uh, antibodies testing as well as part of that. They just, uh, decided to add that on as a throw-in as well. So people who are looking to see if they have the antibodies can, can do that as well at that event. As for the shoe drive, I'm excited, uh, that the town is part of, of, uh, this endeavor as well in partnership with, um, the Village of Bow Harbor, uh, the Town of Miami Lakes and students from our very own Archbishop McCarthy. Um, we are participating in a shoe drive to benefit National Shoe Day. And what we're asking is for, uh, all residents, visitors to the town who may have, uh, some gently worn shoes that they would like to donate to bring them to the collection bin located in front of town hall. And, uh, as it, as that bin gets filled, uh, we'll be, you know, calling to have them, uh, pick that up. And those shoes are going to be donated to Camilla's house in Miami, uh, to benefit the homeless in South Florida. So we're, um, you know, pretty proud of that, uh, partnership with those other cities and the students at Archbishop McCarthy.
Thanks, Russell. Um, and hopefully we'll have a couple bear, pairs of boots in there as well.
Well, I know we got a pair of about a size eight, green pair of Asics that were donated by.
There are nine. I, 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 I have some that, that Russell has, has long coveted. Uh, and so I donated them in his name.
If only they were. Great. Great. Awesome. David, did you have something?
I just had a question to, um, Russell about the shoe, uh, thing. Uh, I remember reading somewhere that on the homeless shelters, um, one of the greatest needs are clean socks. And, um, would that be welcome in, in, as part of this?
You know, I think that's, uh, that's a great suggestion. Uh, it wasn't specifically requested, but I would imagine that that would be welcome as well. I, I'll definitely look into that, but I, I don't see that they would turn those away.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Great idea. Okay, great. Uh, yeah, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, one quick thing. Uh, my wife and I have both been fortunate enough to get the COVID shot that Russell was talking about, uh, registering. I, I'd encourage everybody to get on as many different sites as possible to get registered. Uh, I know Bob had mentioned that, uh, CBC had a site and there's no medicine there yet, but you can still get on these different sites and get registered. And when the medicine does come in, I don't think you care which site you go to as long as you get it. Some sites may take longer to get than others, but if you're on five or six different sites, then I think that would really help.
Hey, great, great, great advice. Thank you, Jim. Okay. I think we're good. Um, Russell, if you could please read in, please read in item number 10.
Certainly, certainly, Mayor. Uh, item 10 is an ordinance, whoops, hold on a second. Sorry about that. Go back to this. Item 10 is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, concerning water protection and conservation, providing for landscape irrigation restrictions and exemptions, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for administrative variance relief, providing for codification, providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Great. Thank you, Russell. Do I have a motion on this?
I can.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Seeing none, if you could please call the question.
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Member Kuzensky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Barcus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. And then item number 11.
Item 11, Mayor, is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order piggybacking off of the City of Fort Lauderdale's agreement with E Sciences Incorporated for environmental permitting services in the amount of $21,640.00 for the town's annual report required by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, permit number FLS 000016-004, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Jim. Is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if you would?
Yeah, please.
Uh, I had no idea what this was. And after discussing it, uh, by piggybacking on, on Fort Lauderdale, it saves the town a great deal of money. Uh, they're doing the research and we're just taking advantage of what they've done. So, you know, I think it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Jim. Any other council comments? Any public comment?
No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. Russell, if you could please call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzensky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Barcus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Outstanding. Guess what?
Go for it.
A much newer, much newer journey.
Excellent.